Good evening and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Livonia Public Schools, Board of Education for March 2nd, 2015. We would first like to open up by thanking very much the Coolidge staff for hosting a wonderful tour this evening of their building. Members of the Board of Education got here about a half an hour early and we were treated to fabulous upgrades in the buildings. For those of you in the community, we thank you very, very much for supporting the bond that is putting these kinds of improvements into our schools. We were able to start off seeing a lot of kindergarten room improvements, some of the technology that is already in the teachers' hands, and then went through the whole building to see windows that are bright and clean and energy efficient, upgraded ceilings and paint and floors, looks like a whole new building. So, thank you very, very much for the graciousness of the Cleveland staff and thank you to the Student Council who are hosting us this evening also. It's been a lot of fun so far. First item on our agenda tonight is Audience Communications. I don't have any blue slips, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the Board? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item. Item two is our Curriculum Committee tonight. Mrs. Laura is absent tonight, who is the Chair of our Curriculum Committee, therefore, Mr. Centers, would you chair Curriculum Committee?
Sure. I think we have Mrs. Alice this evening. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Centers, and good evening everyone. The topic, School Improvement, that is a topic that is near and dear to my heart and it is one of my most favorite agenda items at Board Meetings because it gives our schools a chance to share with the Board of Education and our community the tremendous work that they do to educate the students in their schools. As you've heard me say previously, the purpose of schools is to educate students and the purpose of school improvement is to evaluate the effectiveness of that education. And in Livonia Public Schools, we use the Continuous Improvement Cycle to drive our school improvement efforts at both the district level and at the school level. At the district level, we use the Continuous Improvement Cycle to identify four academic goals for our district, and at the school level, they also use the Continuous Improvement Cycle to identify their three to five student learning goals that are tied directly to the district goals. I have the distinct pleasure this evening of introducing the Coolidge School Improvement Presentation, and tonight you're going to hear some similarities in their presentation that you've heard in previous presentations. You're going to hear about how they use the Continuous Improvement Cycle in their improvement efforts, and you're also going to hear some demographic information about the students at their schools. But then you're going to hear some new information, you're going to hear some new elements in their presentations that you haven't heard in the past. With the state's move to a new online state assessment this spring, that's based on the Common Core State Standards for English Language Arts and Mathematics, the Coolidge staff is going to share with you how they use the Continuous Improvement Cycle to identify the college and career readiness skills that are embedded in the Common Core State Standards, and how they use the work of Mike Schmoker to also influence the identification of college and career readiness skills, and how both of those were influential in creating their integrated reading and writing goals as well as their math goals. And in the past, you heard presentations of MEEP or MME data. With the elimination of MEEP and MME this spring and the administration of the new M-Step Assessment, you're going to hear tonight about new assessments that the Coolidge staff created that are aligned with the Common Core State Standards for English Language Arts and Mathematics, and you're going to hear, they're going to share with you their baseline data from their first administration of these new assessments. You're also going to hear from students via two videotapes, one that's tied directly to their integrated reading and writing goal and one that's tied to their math goal. And then finally, staff from the ASD program are going to share with you how they use adapted Common Core State Standards called Essential Elements to work with the students within their program. So, with that brief introduction, I would now like to introduce the Principal of Coolidge Elementary School, Mr. Larry Grezak, and the very dedicated Coolidge School Improvement Team. They are going to share with you their relentless collaborative and collective efforts to educate every student in their school to ensure that they have the skills to be college and career ready.
Welcome to Coolidge tonight, I'm Larry Grezak, the Principal here. We are very excited to have you here tonight for two reasons. Of course, the first reason is our school improvement plan. We feel like we've done a lot of work and we're very proud of the things we've done here, and we really like the direction we're heading and we're excited to share that with anyone who will listen.[1038.01][1038.01](Laughter). But also, it was nice to, being a Phase 1 school in the renovation, it was nice to go on a tour and get to show off all the new things that we have. And we do know that none of that would be possible without our community and the support of the Livonia community made a commitment to Livonia Public Schools and we appreciate that. But also, behind the scenes, we know that the Central Office staff has thousands of hours into this project and they are constantly on the ball and planning and designing and it's a lot of work, and we really appreciate that too, so thank you to you guys for that. Before we get into the nuts and bolts of our school improvement plan, we kind of have a foundation here at Coolidge, and there are the Coolidge priorities. We don't think, I don't believe, any school improvement plan could really get off the ground if this was not in the forefront. We have five priorities that guide us in all of our decision-making, we try to refer to them often. We have a Coolidge handbook, staff handbook that we review as needed, and as a school improvement team, we always try to think about, does this, does this decision align with who we want to be and who we are? And these priorities always lead us and keep us on the right path. So, obviously, safety is everyone's number one priority, but on top of the physical safety of our students, we value and put right up there the emotional safety. We want students to know that someone at Coolidge believes in them, cares for them, is there for them, understands them, and we make that a priority. We think that will make this a great learning environment, a great work environment, and really lays the foundation for great learning. That kind of leads into climate, and I found this quote, if you look up the man who said it, I'm not sure it really goes with his lifestyle, so I don't know why he said it, but, "The best way to inspire people to superior performance is to convince them by everything you do and by your everyday attitude that you are wholeheartedly supporting them," and really that says it all in a nutshell. Our families, our students, our teachers, the more we support each other and the more we know that we are supported, the better we can teach and work and learn. So, that is very important to us. And expectations come in two different ways. We don't, we don't ever, ever want a kid, a student, to wonder what is expected of them. We want them to know, we want it to be ingrained in their head, we want to set them up for success. So, the more they know, the more they can live these expectations, the better off they're going to be. So, we go out of a way to teach these expectations, discuss them, model them, practice them throughout the year, but also sometimes, in kindergarten especially, I've seen them practice throughout the day. So, we're always learning what's expected of us and we hope the kids always know. But, the other thing is, we want, we expect students to be their best, and we know that is something that comes naturally to some and to others, it's a struggle, or maybe they don't even know what their best is. So, we use the Growth Mindset or the Mindset Principles by Carol Dweck to teach kids how to be their best. And basically, if you've never heard of them, there's two mindsets in people, you're a fixed mindset or you're a growth mindset. If you have a fixed mindset, you hang your hat on being intelligent, being talented, being skilled, the results in your life. If you have a growth mindset, you hang your hat on being a doer, being a problem solver, being a go-getter, achieving things when, going after challenges, and being up for challenges and getting things done. And really, Carol Dweck's research shows that those people are more likely to be the best person they can be. They don't give up, they get the job done because that's what they value about themselves. So, that is what, as teachers, as our staff, we try to notice those things more. We try to notice, how did you study for that test that you may have aced? How did you get by that problem that in the beginning maybe you did not know how to do or where to start? And if we notice the process, if we notice character traits that we like, kids will learn to value that about themselves more than just being, "I'm smart, I'm talented." So, that's one of the ways we teach kids to be the best they can be. These three things are very important and they kind of stand alone, but the next two things are linked very closely to our school improvement plan, and you're going to hear more detailed explanations of them as this presentation goes on. But, in a nutshell, authentic literacy, how do people in the real world read and write? Why do they read and write? They read and, they read for fun, they read for pleasure, but they also read to find answers and to learn things, to see other people's opinions, and almost all writing is in response to what someone learned or responding to someone else's thoughts. So, we consider those our authentic literacy, that is what reading and writing is about. And we try to gear our lessons towards that type of learning and that type of skill. Focus, Goals, and Curriculum, that is our school improvement plan. We do not feel like all standards were created equally, they're all important, they're not all equal. So, our, the standards that you're going to hear about today, we feel take a priority over everything else. We feel that if our students leave 4th grade knowing how to do what we're teaching them with this school improvement plan, they will be successful as they move on. This is our process that Sheila talked about. We've had a major shift in the last couple of years, our vision is drastically different from what it was a couple of years ago. The Michigan Glicks, when I taught them in 3rd and 4th grade, sometimes they felt like a checklist of things to do, maybe at times even a little random, where the Common Core State Standards, we know they were written for college and career readiness, we know that's their goal, and it's really created a shift in how we feel about K-4 education. We are not, the first couple of years of this random type of curriculum, we are the first couple of years, we're the foundation for college and career readiness, and we take that seriously, and it's created a shift in our thinking and it's created a different future for our students. Our profile, what is our current reality? The data that you're going to see here is not impressive, it's not good, it's not even okay, it's bad, but we knew that. We have, we talked about it last year before any of this even happened, we prepared each other and we said, "Listen, we know what you're going to see is rough, don't give students the benefit of the doubt on next year's pre-tests, they should not be good at this." When next year starts, which is this year, we're at the starting line of a marathon and really, as I speak to you now, we might be on the third mile. So, we are not supposed to be good at this, and we accept that, but we did not want that to stand in the way of what we believed was the right thing to do and what we thought Coolidge kids needed. So, that's where we stand and you're going to get that data in a little bit. The rest of our team here is going to talk to you about our plan, but it's very important, throughout the plan, throughout this cycle, we are always monitoring what's going on. We always try to get a touch of, or a feel for what the staff is thinking, maybe there is not some new data coming out, or maybe we're not looking at data, but as a team, we try to feel what the staff is feeling, and either by just talking to teachers or having discussions or looking at data, we monitor what's going on, and our goal is probably not going to change in the next few years, who knows how long, but by monitoring what's going on, the path we take there might be tweaked a little bit. So, this is the continuous cycle and it's a tried and true method, and I feel, I value its process and how it helps you improve, and it really, it never stops. So, the team is going to take it from here, I'd like to introduce you to Mrs. Marissa Burke, she's a kindergarten teacher, and she's going to talk to you a little bit about our demographics and OSS.
Thank you, Larry. Good evening, everyone. Well, Coolidge is just a great place to learn. As you can see from our fall enrollment history, over the past five years, our enrollment has just continued to grow and increase. We currently have 518 students. Our ASD program, which is children with Autism Spectrum Disorder, we have 28 students that are spread amongst four classrooms. Our general ed program has 18 teachers and 490 students. We have an at-risk population with our English language learners, our free and reduced lunch with our economically disadvantaged, and our students with disabilities. Here at Coolidge, we strive to meet each and every child's academic needs. Unfortunately, not all students will qualify for extra support, so to ensure that we are meeting all of those students' needs, we have a system called Operation Student Success, and that system helps us find the students that need that extra support, it helps us target the skills that they will need, and it helps us provide that support to them. So, what happens is, as a group, each grade level will meet with our achievement team three times a year. We will use the data from our reading assessments, our universal screeners, and we'll just, we'll discuss that data, we're going to identify those students who might benefit from extra support, and that support can come within the classroom and outside of the classroom. Our second tier of support for our general ed students mostly comes from Amy Rand, who is our elementary support teacher, but starting this year, we're very lucky to be able to use 10% of our resource room teachers' help and our speech teachers' help, and we also have been able to utilize our LMC teachers' help as her schedule allows. So, with these four interventionists, we are able to support the most struggling 10% of our gen ed students, which is wonderful, so we're able to offer them, excuse me, individual and small group literacy support, which is wonderful for them. Our school EST and co-chair, excuse me, of our school improvement team, Amy Rand, will be up next, she's going to discuss the book Focus by Mike Schmoker and how it guided us to creating our school improvement plan.
So, focus can be defined as a state or quality of having a clear visual direction. It is, as explained by Mike Schmoker, is a way of radically improvement student learning by elevating the essentials. Mike Schmoker is a former Franklin High School student, just to get that little plug in there. Our school improvement team really used this book as a guide to help us reevaluate what we felt was important. We used it to have open, honest discussion about what we wanted students to be able to do when they left Coolidge Elementary. We began this process by determining our priorities. We knew we wanted a focused curriculum that allowed students to be college and career ready. So, we kind of looked at those Common Core standards and figured out, we knew that we wanted students to leave having knowledge and skills that were going to be useful for long-term, skills that were going to go across different content areas and also would provide them with what they needed to know for the next grade level. And it was through this process that we developed our power strands. And it was through this process that we developed our power strands. We felt it was essential for students to leave having a solid ability to read, understand and respond to texts through writing and discussion, and to persevere through difficult and complex tasks. With our newly-developed power strands, we now had what we were teaching, but now we needed to look at how we teach. And we wanted to look at Authentic Literacy, which were three of what Mike Schmoker discusses are essential for schools. In our discussion of how we teach, or in his, I'm sorry, in his discussion of how he teaches, Mike Schmoker refers to that basic lesson plan that we all know and love, that was been around forever. We begin by having a specific targeted objective for the students. Then we go through and we teach, we model, we do guided practice. And then we follow up with frequent checks of understanding. It's those frequent checks of understanding that are essential to help guide our lesson plans. Frequent checks of understanding are actually our most basic form of formative assessment. And this allows us to really look at what the students are doing and be able to guide our instruction and change where we need to make adjustments so we can best meet students' needs as they're learning. He believes, Schmoker believes that by doing frequent formative assessment, we can actually help kids learn four times faster than without it. Authentic literacy is something else that Mike Schmoker really discusses in his book. And it is purposeful reading, writing, and discussion as the primary modes of learning both content and critical thinking skills. Our school improvement team really focused on this. And we set, we decided that we wanted to set a target for each lesson and use a well-developed text-based question that would go along with what the kids were reading. So students would take that text-based question, they would read a selected text, take notes. Following that, they would have a classroom discussion about what they had read. And then they would go back and they would use that information to help them write about what they had read. Having all of these activities, they were using higher-level critical thinking skills such as analyzing, synthesizing, and evaluating. By changing our focus and determining our priorities, we are providing students with immense amount of time to engage in reading and writing activities across the content areas. And it is our belief that by doing this, that we're going to be able to have kids that are leaving Coolidge prepared for college and their career. Patty Cook, our literacy leader, and one of our 3rd grade teachers, and Peggy Breset, my co-chair for NCA and our 3rd, 4th grade teacher, are now going to take you a little bit more in-depth into our integrated reading and writing.
Good evening, I'm Peggy Breset. I teach a 3-4 currently at Coolidge. And we're just going to, we're so excited to share with you what we're doing at Coolidge with our students and the progress that we are already seeing. Just like Amy Rand has said, based on Mike Schmoker's book, you know, he states that an essay is the best possible all-in-one assessment of abilities to both read and write effectively. Therefore, at Coolidge, we thought that it made sense to integrate our reading and writing goals to align with this belief. So as you can see, we have, all Coolidge students will read closely to determine what the text says explicitly, to make logical inferences from it, and will cite specific textual evidence when reading, when writing or speaking to support conclusions drawn from the text. And that's aligned with the Common Core Reading Anchor Standard 1. And then our writing goal is all Coolidge students will write informative explanatory, I'm sorry, let me read it right here. "All Coolidge students will write informative explanatory texts to examine and convey complex ideas and information clearly and accurately through the effective selection, organization, and analysis of content." And that's aligned with the Common Core Writing Anchor Standard 2. So at Coolidge, we, you know, went one step further, and we created an integrated reading and writing assessment where our students were assessed on how they were going to read, think, evaluate, analyze, question, and organize text. In your packet that you have in front of you, we also have the rubrics in there. You can take a look at those. And now Patty's going to talk a little bit about our current data that we have.
Okay, so when you look at our data for our integrated reading and writing goals, if you look at the Fonnison panel, it looks as though we're doing really, really well. And we are. 87% are at and above grade level. With our new authentic assessments that we're doing, you can see it's much lower. As Mr. Rizax saw, we're like in the beginning of a marathon. 13% and 8% for writing. But this is new to our students, and it's new to us. And so we're working very hard on using authentic literacy, reading, taking notes, responding to a question, writing to it, using evidence from the text. So although it's low, we expected it to be low, and it's okay. We know that our students are very good at surface thinking, with the who, what, you know, retelling a story. This is different because you do have to analyze and think and evaluate. So there is some discrepancy there, but we're okay with that. And we know that it's going to improve a lot. So we have an example of what our assessments look like. This is what a kindergarten assessment would look like. So all of our students, K through 4, are giving the National Geographic magazine. In kindergarten, they're pretty much read to them. They have a copy that they can look at too. And they answer a question based on the reading, or read aloud from the teacher. And then they draw their evidence-based pictures with the descriptor sentence. Now, this was at the beginning of the year. This is an example of the text that was read. It was called Birdwatch. What do flamingos need from the lake to survive? And so they drew pictures, it has water, food, and a nest. Now, at the first grade level, I mean kindergarten level, that was very, very simplified. That was the beginning of the year. In your packets, and what I have here, is what is, what they've progressed to now. And it's, what can a penguin do? And this is kindergarten, and it's in your packet. So a penguin can sit on ice, a penguin can slide, and a penguin can swim in the sea.
It's a student example section.
Student example section, correct. And that's, what, about a month ago, I think, this example? So you can see already how far a kindergartner has come since the beginning of the year. It's not the same kindergarten student, but you get an idea of the progression. That's the expectation for kindergarten. In 1st grade, the expectation is that they will read and write one paragraph. And in 2nd grade, the expectation is three paragraphs in response. In 3rd grade, they write a five-paragraph essay with an introduction, three body parts. So each one of these would be a different paragraph, and then a conclusion. And then again in 4th grade.
So our 4th graders, what we want their benchmark to be is that they'll be able to answer a question based on their reading by writing an evidence-based essay. This was very difficult for them in the beginning. Lots of frustration, but real-life skills. So, you know, we value this at Coolidge. We were teaching the children to persevere and work through it, supporting them along the way. But through a lot of practice, the results we're already seeing are beyond impressive to me. So basically, what we do is the teachers give, you know, a clear purpose for reading, like Patty was saying, we pose a big question. And the most important piece that, you know, I enjoy is that we pick an authentic piece of literacy. We can find text that is integrated with the content area. It's not random for the kids. It's something that we're already studying in science or social studies. There's a big focus question, then they, so we've defined the reading with a purpose. It's that they're independent and for instructional level. And then, this is the organizer that our 3rd and 4th graders would use. We've used a couple different organizers along the way. We've kind of simplified some things, found what worked, found what didn't work, and made some changes. And through this graphic organizer, the nice thing is teachers can use this as a formative assessment to then direct their teaching. You know, what are the kids getting, what are they not? It's really quick, it's right in front of you. It's not something that, you know, you have to grade. It just, you know, increases your instruction right off the bat. And then from their notes, then what we do is we guide them through drafting a five-paragraph essay. The nice thing is, the way that this is set up, it's already in that structure for them. So teaching them to pull out what's important, the important information, and then, you know, turning it therefore into a five-paragraph essay. So we are actually going to watch a little video clip. You're going to see a 2nd grade classroom with Kelsey Duff. She's the 2nd grade teacher there. And she's going to walk you through this process with our 2nd graders.
This is evidence-based writing with my 2nd graders. Giving the students a purpose for reading helps guide them in their nonfiction writing. Our purpose at Coolidge is often driven by posing a question for students to answer in their writing.
We're given books on penguins, and you had to find the facts. When you found the facts, wrote them down, you put them on the poster.
Once they found evidence that helped answer a question, the students had to do some organization. As a group, we decided what was important to have in our topic and closing sentences. Then we built the paragraph using our organized evidence to tie up to our topic sentence.
Show me with your thumbs, what words must be in our topic and closing sentence? Show me with your thumbs, what? Bird? Penguin? A? Unique? So we need to have Penguin, and we need to have Unique. Who can come up? We need a topic sentence with the word Penguin and. Thumbs? She's Penguin, but she's Unique. Okay. Penguins don't bend their knees. They waddle. Put that in your own words. Penguins' feet are webbed for swimming. Remember our question, what makes a penguin unique bird? Penguins' feet are webbed for swimming. Does that fit in that question? Show with your thumbs.
While some students wrote independently, I supported a smaller group in writing and completing their paragraphs.
Here's our question, what makes a penguin unique bird? Let's read that as a topic. What? Question, not paper? Let's roll, Ben, ready to go? Sophie and I have a penguin body that we're here to.
Penguins are so uniquely unique. Penguins have webbed feet to help them swim. Penguins have wings, but they cannot fly. The emperor penguin can dive into the water 1,750 feet down to catch a fish. I think penguin bodies are so unique.
Let me get a face.
Yeah.
Hey, I do a breezy!
Breezy!
Do you ever wonder what makes penguin locations so unique? Penguins sleep in and out of the water. Most birds don't do that. Many penguins, as many as 24 million penguins, visit the Antarctic each year. Normal birds don't go there. You can find penguins in South America, Africa, and even Australia. There you have it. Why penguin locations are so unique.
And now Beth Hathaway is, she's a teacher of a 1-2 split class. She is going to talk to you about our math goals, our math pre-assessments.
Good evening, my name's Beth Hathaway, and I'm pleased to present to you our school improvement goal in the area of mathematics. The standard that we have selected is Mathematical Practice Number 1, which states that our Coolidge students will make sense of problems and persevere in solving them. With this goal in mind, our Coolidge staff attended a training session back in September with a focus on problem solving. During this training, we learned the four steps of the problem-solving process as well as how to lead productive mathematical discussions within our classroom. Following our training, we began by administering a pre-assessment to our kindergarten through 4th grade students. This, the purpose of this pre-assessment was to determine how our students approach problem solving and how well they were able to explain their mathematical thinking. We discovered that the majority of our children were very frustrated with problem solving. Not going to lie, we even had some tears, a whole lot of blank papers. And it was very clear that the majority of our students had very little experience with this particular, this particular activity. In fact, our data revealed that only 5% of our Coolidge students performed at or above grade level in this area of problem solving. After the pre-assessment, we began to teach and model the four steps of the problem-solving process. What are these problem-solving steps? Well, I have recruited several of my 2nd grade friends who are now going to tell you about the problem-solving process in their own words. Or maybe not yet. Okay.
Please, the 2nd and 3rd grade combination class are going to tell you the four steps of problem solving.
The first step of problem solving is understanding. Read your book and make a clear understanding basis of what do I need to find out? Look for the numbers that help you solve the problem.
The second step of problem solving is make a plan. For example, you could act it out, draw a picture, count coins, add, subtract, whatever can help you. The time has gotten to work the matter for a while. Easy peaches, Tom, but not at all. Go to the game better.
The third step of problem solving is do. Do your plan. You'll have, you'll have to do, do it. It won't write the answer down, it's still.
One of the key learnings about problem solving is never, ever, ever, ever give up.
Last step of problem solving is always check your book. Always ask yourself, does the page make sense? And is it reasonable? Even if something doesn't look right, always check it. You can maybe ask a friend or a teacher. It always, always explains your brain. So there are the four steps of problem solving. Understand, make a plan, do it, view it.
Once children are more familiar with each of the four steps of the problem-solving process, teachers began to provide opportunities each week for problem-solving practice. Over the last five or six months, several things have become very apparent. Problem-solving abilities develop very slowly and over time. And with this in mind, our teachers have really had to make a commitment to providing regular and consistent opportunities for problem solving. In addition, our students must realize the importance of engaging in these difficult tasks. In order to teach children to persevere, there has to be a certain level of difficulty involved with the problem. If problem solving is going to be an integral part of our math, of our mathematical program, teachers must create a climate where their students feel comfortable taking risks and making mistakes. Teachers are working hard to encourage children to discuss their mathematical thinking and different problems, different problems and strategies with their peers. So often, our children are focused on an answer. And problem solving is so much more than an answer, it's a process. And so we're really encouraging our students to discuss their strategies, to look at their own work, to evaluate what they feel that they've done right. Perhaps they have to back up a step or two and look at the problem again. And so all of this has to happen in an environment, in a climate, where children feel safe to express themselves and their thinking. As excited as we were about problem solving in the classroom, we really wanted our community to be more involved. We felt that we needed the parents to support the learning that was taking place in class. So January was designated as Math Month. And prior to the month, teachers selected grade-appropriate problems and put together problem-solving packets for each child to take home at the beginning of January. Throughout the month, each week, children were encouraged to work on a problem-solving task or activity at home with a little support from a parent. And as... And as they returned their problem-solving activities, we had all sorts of spirit days to encourage the work that they were doing at home. And the children were very excited about these incentives that they were earning. Some of these spirit days included Slipper Day, Bring a Stuffed Animal to School Day. We had a Junk Food Snack Day. And at the end of Math Month, we had a culminating activity, which was a super fun surprise for the children. We had an ice cream sundae bar, and our PTA graciously sponsored our Math Month magician who performed for our K-4 students. We felt that Math Month was a huge success, and it was a great way to promote problem solving within the community. As we know, problem solving is a lifelong skill, and it certainly exists outside of our classrooms. Here at Coolidge, several of our fourth grade parents have organized a robotics club. And this club encourages problem solving in a different way. Children are applying math and science skills in order to build and program robots of their own. They encounter many challenges and difficulties along the way, but with a little perseverance, they are working together to come up with solutions to real-life situations. As you can see, the staff and students, and even the parents here at Coolidge, have really made a commitment to problem solving. We're excited to see children engaged in various levels of problem solving in and around the building. And we're hopeful to see an improvement in this particular area of mathematics. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Beth Warwick, our Speech and Language Pathologist, who's going to tell you a little bit about our ASD Center program.
There we go. Like she said, I'm Beth Warwick, I'm the Speech Language Pathologist, and I service both the general education side of Coolidge, and I service ASD Center. But at Coolidge, we believe in one school and one team. At the center, we attempt to mirror the school improvement goals that are selected by the school improvement team. As part of the service that I provide to the center, we run peer buddy groups. And they are comprised of general education students and students from the ASD Center. In these pictures, you'll see some of our peer buddy groups. We had a snow activity, we had a whole snow day, but it was at school. And we played crafts, we had some snow games, and then we all went outside to make snow angels. So it was a really fun day for our peer buddies. I believe that these groups allow students in the ASD Center who are ready the opportunity to practice social skills with their general education peers. Our groups meet to model and practice social skills such as taking your turn, waiting, and commenting. But I feel that our general education students get more than they give. They help plan activities for their peer buddies, and they want their peer buddy to be successful. They help problem-solve behaviors, and they're exposed to the unique learning styles of other kids. As I said, we want to promote one school, one team. Our teachers in the Coolidge Center use the adapted version of the Common Core State Standards called the Essential Elements. Now I would like to introduce one of our teachers from the Coolidge Center, Mrs. Nancy LaPrairie. She's going to be talking about the Essential Elements.
Hi, everybody. I know that probably everybody knows what autism is, or some of the signs of it, but kind of in a nutshell, our students have pretty significant impairments in communication, behavior, social interactions, and some sensory issues. So, when we're looking at the actual teaching and trying to provide a curriculum, a lot of people might think, hmm, how are these kids going to be able to do that? Well, just starting last year, we began to implement something that's called the Essential Elements Curriculum. And basically what it is, is it's a variation of your core standards. In previous years, it used to be called Eglx. But the problem that we had with Eglx was that it was still pretty subjective, for the teachers could kind of pick and choose what they wanted, what they wanted to teach. There was no consistency against, across grade levels. And it was incredibly hard to make these measurable. And of course, we wanted to be able to absolutely be able to measure our kids' progress, report to the parents their progress, and allow teachers in the upcoming years to know exactly what supports, the modifications the kids needed. So what basically they are, is they're based off the Anchor Standards, and we do them right now for mathematics, ELA, and writing. It is right now a national initiative, but each state, just like Core Standards right now, can still choose whether they want to buy into it or not. Fortunately, Michigan has bought into it, and we're happy about that. Where they came from was, three years ago, Wayne County RISA is over all of the programs of students that are with ASD that are center-based programs. They started forming some work groups from all the different center programs across the county. And they started looking at the Core Standards, and they chose which standards were our high-priority standards. Again, they were trying to pick these ones that, these are for children with significant impairments, that we want to be able to be independent, contributing members of society as they grow up. These work groups then put these high-priority standards into a pacing guide, which is really nice, because each month, they prioritize, so we know exactly which month we're teaching what skills. And they also developed assessments that actually allow us to be able to record what the kids are actually doing. And they also made a rubric that says which level of supports the kids need. So there's four different levels, from intensive supports, two kids that are functioning independently. But this allows us to measure, allows us to say, oh, how can we take it to the next step? And for the first time, we're able to see, oh, I'm looking at this Core Standard as a second grader, what's it gonna look like when they're in 12th grade? And I'm able to see that link and that progression as the kids are going through the system. And I've taught a lot of years, and we've never had this. And I'm just incredibly thrilled that we finally have this connection happening for our special needs kids. The reason that this is most critical to me is because now we can hold all students, whether they're special needs or not, to higher expectations than I think we have in the past. And we're giving them the chance to learn the same curricular components that their general ed peers are. And that's something that we've been looking for a very long time. And with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to the front again, who I think is gonna round this off.
Yep. There's a chance we went a little over our time limit here, so I'll try to make this quick. But in a nutshell, reviewing our presentation, first things first, safety, climate expectations. Our, the Common Core created our shift. And actually, we, in our discussion that we had a long time ago, we didn't talk about what should kids be good at your grade. We talked about what do your husbands and wives and college-age kids, what do you think they should be good at? And that's how we kind of started. We're trying to teach with keeping authentic literacy practices in mind that require higher-level thinking and more well-thought responses. A prioritized focus on essential skills allows us to slow down. We feel that having these priorities enhances and increases formative assessment. And formative assessment makes learning more efficient and more effective. And when you're, when you feel it's okay to slow down a little bit, and get things right, and listen to your kids, it increases learning. Preparing kids for problem solving and big questions and these responses, and appreciating hard work and determination, we feel that that is gonna make them successful as they move on from Coolidge and move on into adulthood. And we really try, one Coolidge, one team. We're one group with five wings, but we're, we really value being one team. And that's, that's how we choose to be. So and the Essential Elements plays a big role in allowing our center to have nearly the same goals as we do. That about wraps it up. If anyone has any questions for any of us, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Griesek. Anyone? Questions? Comments?
First of all, amazing, really amazing stuff.
Thank you.
I wish my kids could learn some of this stuff, because we're struggling with this right now in the eighth grade. Just to bring it down to the kids at that level is just, it's fantastic. My question is, and you touched on it a little bit, how is the, how are the parents handling this? I know sometimes when we brought in the new math and stuff like that, they are a little difficult for them, because they don't, can't help their kids with the homework as much. And are you getting a good response on it?
You know, we've had coffee with the principal and things like that, talked about it at PTA meetings. I think people are on board. I think it's kind of like everyday math was, where we found out, or I found out, when we started Reading Month last week, and some of the information went out, parents were like, well, what's a graphic organizer? I was like, well, I guess my wife doesn't know what that is. So we had a, how, what is a graphic organizer page added to the packet? But, I mean, I think we have a lot of parents on our staff, and, you know, they talk all the time about how happy they are about what's coming home for writing.
One of the statuities, a lot of us mentioned during our parent-teacher conferences, we showed samples of what the children were working on, showed samples of the graphic organizer, showed samples of what we wanted it to look like, gave them examples of what we were hoping to see. And, you know, as we're sending home things throughout, throughout the year, I think parents have a better idea of what we're working, working on in class.
What you just said is now was a aha moment in our, one of our first discussions. We had, we had teachers with college-age students and eighth graders, and they thought, man, this is what my eighth grader is struggling with right now. This is what my high school kid is struggling with right now. And it kind of helped the shift happen a little quicker. Really, exactly what you just said.
It's just fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank all of the staff that put, I'm sure, an immense amount of time and no problems, no small amount of nerves in putting this whole thing together. And, and thank you, because I hope you're not nervous, because you are presenting information to us, and you know just exponentially more about what you're talking about with these details than we do. But thank you for, for sharing all this with us tonight and helping us get a better picture. I mean, the graphic organizer, seeing it up there, was like, if that was not us or me, then that does. It, it does help you understand how a kid that young can really get it and put those pieces together. I also wanted to commend you on, on the four steps of problem solving. And realize that a lot of adults jump into the middle of that problem-solving process without really going through four stages of it. And this group is, is no different. We, as a group of eight individuals, the seven of us and four members with Dr. Leepa, have guided work through a lot of issues. And really, probably different people start off in different stages. And unless you get your whole group together and go through those steps together, I'm looking forward to using that ourselves as our group, because I'm sure that it will make our processes easier as a board. So not only have you helped your elementary kids, but you're proud to, I believe, help our board too. So, thank you very much.
Before I end, I'd like to say how proud I am of our staff. This is, this is hard. I mean, we went into this knowing it was gonna be hard. And even, you might be surprised, but just shifting over to leading a math discussion is a big shift that, as a teacher, made me nervous. And, you know, as a staff, they have attacked this. And I'm just so proud of how we can be so nervous and excited and get so many things done at the same time, and, and just love the direction we're going, so.
Yeah, thank you very much, and thank you, the whole, seeing the whole staff out here tonight, seeing the students, seeing the whole Coolidge team is very, very exciting, very inspirational. We thank you for everything you're doing.
Good, thank you. I think we thank you too.
Okay, I think we're moving on to DSIT goals, and Mrs. Oakwist?
Untangling.
Great job, congratulations. Great job.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Centers.
Good evening.
I just wanted to share how, how proud I am of the Coolidge staff and Mr. Griesek in that presentation. It was, it was phenomenal, thank you, and all the paperwork that you shared with us as well. Good evening, I'm here to provide an update to you from the District School Improvement Team. You had a sneak preview last Monday at our study session. And so what I'd like to do is share with you a little bit more detail in relation to the District School Improvement Team goals. Bring you up to speed from where we've been and where we are headed. Actually, Mrs. Bonicle, if you wanna pass those back to Cabinet. Thank you.
Colin, I'll start a pile for Mrs. Laurel.
Okay.
So just a reminder, some of these things I may have already shared with you in the past, but just to put it all together in one package, I'll share with you where we came at the end of last year, since my last update to you in May, and take you a little bit, a picture through this year so far. As you recall, for the past two years, 2012 to 2014, we had three shared vision goals, and those are the goals that you see first on the first page of the handout. You may recall that at the conclusion of last school year, the District School Improvement Team worked through the disposition of those three goals and made a determination if we would continue this year, continuing to focus on those goals, or whether or not we would modify those or maintain them. And that was based on the most recent round of survey data that we had received from students last spring. So just briefly, the climate and environment goal, students feeling emotionally safe in school. The District School Improvement Team voted to keep that goal, but with modifications. And I'll discuss what that means in just a moment. Under Engaged Learners, students are encouraged to give their personal best. After much discussion, we made a determination that if we expanded the scope under the umbrella of students feeling emotionally safe in school, that we could fold in elements of students being encouraged to give their personal best. And therefore, the recommendation was to incorporate that into the climate and environment goal. Finally, under Employee Capacity, there was a goal related to staff working collaboratively to support and improve student learning. And as you may recall, that moved into the area of district initiatives. So in addition to our DSIT school climate goals, we also have, as you know, many, many initiatives taking place in our district that are moving us toward our shared vision. Therefore, this was part of the Advanced Ed Required Actions. And this, so therefore, this is no longer a District School Improvement Team goal. This is now considered a district initiative. Therefore, we really came to a point where we were at a bit of a crossroads. So one of our options was that DSIT would set a new goal based on the above parameters. We would continue the process, which we've used for the past five years of schools setting goals and creating individual action plans for their school based on their data. And then we would survey students again in 2016. So to really continue on the cycle that we had used previously. Or, we could establish a new process that allowed us to dig deeper and identify the root cause of the survey data before we set new goals and objectives. And to utilize a district-wide strategic planning and implementation process. So rather than schools moving forward as individual units, we would have goals and strategies that went across the district K-12. So as you know, we chose to dig deeper. And I'm just going to highlight a few things for you that we did. Really, these five or six bullets are a very brief summary of where we have been over this past six months. You've heard the term "going to Gamba," that's really going to where the work is being done. And what we decided was, we had the survey data from students, but we had many more questions than we had answers. So we conducted 16 focus groups, 13 with students in grades five through 12, and three with staff from each of our triads. The District School Improvement Team then reviewed and responded to that feedback so that they could provide direction and some next-step suggestions to our administrative leadership team. All of the principals at both the secondary and the elementary principal meetings reviewed the student survey data, the student comments, and the feedback from the focus groups. So they took, had a chance to read through all of the comments and all of the summaries from those focus groups, and identify some common themes that emerged to help us really narrow our area of focus. So you remember, if we go back to that big umbrella goal of students feeling emotionally safe in school, that's pretty nebulous. It's, it's an important focus, but it, it really doesn't allow us to target specific areas. And so, I'm gonna talk in a moment where we decided to go from there. But they were, the principals were a big part of this, because as we've talked about in our last study session, we really need the folks who are going to be doing this work in the schools to have a really, a voice in that important process of determining where are the focus areas? What are the strategic objectives? Then we went back to DSIT. We had them review that feedback and respond to the ideas for the new objectives and targets and measures. And then hopefully, with your approval this spring, we would begin the implementation process of a two-year improvement strategy plan in the fall of 2015. So when we talk about two-year to give you an idea of where we've been and why this process has taken a bit of time. Again, when you're going to dig deeper and peel the layers of the onion, so to speak, you really need to do a lot of dissecting and diagnosing of the problem. And so, each one of these meetings involved conversation surrounding student feedback, adult feedback, and when we brought in the, the triad groups or the staff focus groups, you'll see that we included administrators, teachers, ESTs, SAPs. We really wanted to talk to folks who we thought had their finger on the pulse of what was happening with students. All throughout, you'll see that we continued to keep in touch with DSIT and to continue to garner their feedback, but rather than DSIT directing that process as they have in the past, we're really involving the people at the school level and helping us determine where those focus areas will be. That's been a big shift this year, I think one that will really help to reap the fruits of our labor. We've also put together an administrative planning committee. We have both elementary and secondary principals who are meeting regularly with Mr. Archibald, myself, and Mrs. McDowell. And we continue to hone down those focus areas and start talking about strategies and targets and measurement tools. As you can see, we're at the point now where we're coming back again to our principals and continuing to update them on this process in great detail and garnering their feedback and buy-in along the way. And then we have two additional administrative planning committee meetings set. So, at that point in time, we believe that we will be able to move forward with some very specific plans for the coming year. So, where are we now? We have a school climate goal, again, that's very broad. All students will feel emotionally safe in school. After we looked at all of the data, did some theming and really took a look at what the feedback was telling us, as I shared with you last week, I won't go into all of that same information again, but you may recall that we identified two specific areas in which we wanted to focus. One had to do with empowering students by helping to develop coping skills and strategies so students would be able to be empowered to respond effectively to interactions with peers and adults. There were many, many things that we heard from the student focus groups that we know were challenges and stressors that they will continue to face now and in the future, now, a year from now, five years from now, just as they did a year ago and five years ago. And so, rather than try to, like a whack-a-mole, try to get rid of all of those stressors or all of those concerns in their lives, we decided that it would be much more powerful to help empower them with some coping skills and strategies to be able to respond as those things came up. And really, that's garnered some really interesting dialogue and a lot of support from our administrators and from our teachers. So, we are excited about that. We also know that it's bigger than a breadbox, so it's going to take us some time to really determine what is that going to look like? How are we going to teach that? How are we going to model that? How are we going to reinforce that so that those become intrinsically part of who, who our kids are? So, that is one goal that we have by the end of the 2016-17 school year. The second one is that school and classroom communities will display mutually respectful interactions. And that focus is really to encompass adult-to-student interactions, student-to-student, and adult-to-adult. And we really feel that this idea of valuing one another and creating schools and classrooms where it is an expectation that we have a climate of mutual respect present at all times, again, interactions from student to student. We show a lot to children by what we allow to take place, what we accept, what we choose to ignore, as well as what we choose to address. And so, we're really, again, having some very thoughtful and meaningful conversations about what that will look like. The one thing we also noted is, in both of these cases, especially that second one, we have a lot of this going on in many classrooms in our schools throughout every single day. We don't believe at this point that many is good enough. We want it to be all. And so, that was, that is why that is one of the strategic areas that we would like to focus. So, you'll see here that I have that it's currently considered a focus area rather than a strategic objective. Really, what we're missing and we still need to develop and we're planning to do over those next two administrative meetings is to develop the target areas for these focus, these two focus strategic goals and to develop the measurements. So, we can say we would like to have students, that the outcome would be to have students who are empowered with skills and strategies. We need to know, what are the target outcomes? Specifically, what are we looking for? Are we looking to, that they get better at it, that they know how to do it, that we've taught it? We need to be more specific about those targets and then go back and identify the measurement tools that we will utilize, both for baseline data and for end, end of, end of project data. So, you can see on the third page, our next steps are to develop, again, those target, those targeted outcomes and related strategies. Once we've identified those, we need to bring our teachers back in because they were very, very thoughtful about the strategies that they were suggesting that we could utilize to reach these objectives. They really had some awesome ideas that we're excited to explore. Again, we'll talk more, and I'll talk more with you in May, about some measurement tool options that we have that we're pretty excited about. And then we will create a district-wide plan of action for implementing these identified strategies. So, our goal is to have this ready to go by, go by the end of the school year so that we can move into implementation in the fall. So, Dr. Leepa and I really wanted to share with you two options for moving forward. As you know, one of the changes this year would be that we would be asking you to vote on the goals and strategic objectives for the District School Improvement Team. Certainly, we can bring forward to you, or I can bring forward to you, the goal and, as stated right now, the strategic objective that I've, the strategic objectives that I've outlined, and we can have you vote on that at the March 16th board meeting. Or, as you know, I will be coming to you again in May for the yearly update from DSIT. And at that time, we will have fleshed out some additional details, these target areas. I'll be able to talk with you more about the measurement tools and even identify some example strategies for you. And so, really, we can go in one of two directions, whichever you would prefer. We can either vote on the goals and objectives as-is at our next board meeting, or I can give you an even more complete picture when I come back in May and at the conclusion of that presentation, ask for a motion to adopt the goals for the following year. So, really, that is up to you.
Dr. Leepa?
And just to reiterate what Andre said, we are completely comfortable with either way. We feel that these goals are ready for you to be voted on and so, and if you, and it's been a while, you know, we'd hoped to have these to you in November, actually. And so, if you'd like to, if you'd like to say, "You know what? We're fine with this. The goal's fine and we'd like to support the District School Improvement Team's work with this goal," you could vote on it next Wednesday and we're, we're completely fine with that. Or, if you'd like to just wait till May, till we get our annual, our annual update on District School Improvement Team with a little bit more information, we're 100% fine with that too. So, find both ways. We, we think certainly the information that we have is related to the goal and strategic objective now is fine for you to, to take a position on, but if you'd like to wait, we're, we're comfortable with that too. So, completely up to you.
Does anyone have questions or comments regarding when we'd like to vote or the goals themselves or any other questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
I'm comfortable with going ahead with, with the goal and looking forward to getting more information on, on the nitty-gritty details.
Okay.
In, in May.
Okay.
That's my personal opinion. I'd like to know what fellow board members think.
Just to clarify, you would like to vote in March?
I would like to go ahead and vote in March. I don't see that goal changing between March and, and May and therefore I'd like to go ahead and, and voice my support for that in March.
Sure.
Like I said, provided that we're going to get more details in, in May, which I believe is coming one way or the other.
Definitely.
But, I'd like to know what everybody else thinks.
I'm good with March. Yes.
I'm good with March.
I'm comfortable with that as well.
Elaine?
I'm good either way, I guess. So, what is your opinion, Mrs. Oakwist? Which do you think is the better way to go, based on your professional opinion?
Thank you. I, I really do like the idea of, of perhaps voting on the goal as-is right now and being able to share with the District School Improvement Team that we have the support of the Board of Education, which I know they're looking forward to as well.
Right.
To continue that work. And then really being able to, again, share with you more of the details in the plan of action, so to speak. We're technically asking you to vote on the goal and then in May, I would be bringing you more of the plan of action.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Burton?
I just have one other, other question.
Sure.
I'm assuming that when, that when you're working out the, fleshing out the details, we're looking at this as being multifaceted in that it's, it's not just student to student or just adult to adult, but also student to adult. I mean, kind of going, taking that, that spider web of all of our interactions in our schools.
Yeah.
Because for some folks, it's, it's, it's natural and it comes very easily. It's part of their personality, it's part of who they are. And for others, it may be more of a, more of a, a stretch and that's speaking of, of students and adults.
You're so right. And I will tell you, we're continuing to really have some dialogue about that because that is a lot to take on in a two-year period. Right now, that is our plan, to be able to cover each of those aspects. And then what we think we would like to do is, we know that some of those are more challenging depending on the level, so it may look a little different. The focus may look a little different. We may focus on student to student more at one level and adult to student more at, at others. We really would like to incorporate all three of those aspects for students because they, they really just don't encounter things in their life in, in one way or another.
No.
So, we'd like to get through that, that whole package. I will share that we have folks that are, that feel that that's a lot for us to take on. And so, part of that will be determining what do those strategies look like? What are we going to be asking people to do in the schools with that? But, that is our goal at this time. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Andrea, refresh my recollection, we have a DSIT meeting in April.
We do, April 28th.
Okay. I, I think that's another reason why we should vote and get that information and that approval to the DSIT.
Yes.
And let them move forward.
I think that would be great feedback for them.
Anyone else? Well, I want to, I would like to thank you, having gone to two DSIT meetings, yourself, Mrs. McDowell, just fabulous job. We, we all agree this is what Mrs. McDowell presented as a wicked problem.
Yes.
In that it's very large, it's hard to wrap your arms around. However, everyone there seems very committed about making some progress towards this.
Yes.
And just the passion to make the kids feel safe is really inspirational. So, thank you for everything you're doing.
You're so welcome. We do, we do feel very passionately about this and believe it is an essential, essential foundation for all of our students in all of our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Burton?
Finished. All righty. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item three. I neglected to mention at the beginning of our meeting, those who are in attendance tonight have copies of the agendas available. If you are at home and follow, would like to follow along, our agenda can be found on our school website, which is lavoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the School Board tab, you can drop right down to agendas at any time and see the agenda of any meeting that, that you're, you're watching and that includes tonight. The next item on our agenda is item three, Building Insight, and I'll be turning it over to Mr. Johnson, our chair.
Thank you, President Burton. We have a number of items on the agenda tonight, all of which deal with our bid results and Ms. Abby will walk us through these. Good evening.
Good evening. With a little help from my friends, Mr. Paul Terrio from Plant Rankrassa is going to be joining me in just a second. And I also see Steve Mencero from McCarthy Smith is in the audience as well tonight, our construction managers. Paul's going to be handing out the binders that you're very familiar with, with the bids. As you know, we are well into bid season for phase number two of the 2013 bond. We will be, as you saw from that list that we gave you, bringing many, many bids to the board this month. We have already looked at the bid results for our upper elementary and middle school for this year. Tonight, we're going to be looking at our elementary school bid results for construction as well as some abatement bids as well. And one item I do want to just make a note of is that last item, 3E, the bid results for move management. We are going to take that off of the agenda tonight. We did have a little bit work to get through and finalize that bid result, so we'll bring that to our next committee, Building Insight Committee meeting.
Will the bond cover the library that I'm going to have to go up for my binder?
Yes, yes.
We haven't cleared shelf off already.
Yeah, yeah. And, and you really have to like maybe change the name or something so you can grab them quickly, right? Again, this is one of three that we'll look at. We've already looked at one set. We'll look at these tonight and then later this month, we'll be bringing back the move management again, as well as the Franklin High School bid results, which I think are due on Tuesday, if I remember correctly.
They are.
So, big day on Tuesday. So, with that, Paul Terrio, again, thank you very much and he'll be going through the detail of the bid results.
So, thank you for the invitation to be here again. So, deja vu, we have another binder full of bid awards to go through. So, as Ms. Abby mentioned, we have some construction bids for Hayes, Kennedy, and Roosevelt. We also have some abatement bids for all six buildings for 2015. And then one thing that I had probably forgotten to mention that we wanted to put on the agenda if possible was Franklin Environmental Consulting Agreement. We had actually brought forth the other five buildings last time, but we didn't have a proposal yet because the survey work hadn't been done for Franklin, for the abatement work. So, we actually brought a proposed change order to ETC Group this evening. It's under the amount that requires us to bring it to the board, but again, to be transparent, we thought it would make sense to bring that this evening, so.
And, and that would be an extension of the contract that they currently have.
Correct. It's an existing contract, it's just a change.
That was bid out previously.
Yep.
So, if we can just make a note though to change the agenda, so we'll have this properly documented for our committee meeting notes, change E to review a Franklin environmental agreement.
From the move management, right?
Yep, from the move management. So, we'll ta, we'll, we'll table that or we'll just cancel that item. This is not a formal motion, we don't need to table it, but we'll just take that item off the agenda, include as E, review a Franklin environmental agreement and we'll make sure that we have that reflected in the minutes and so on. So, whoever, two years down the road, trying to remember when we talked about that in committee, will have that recognized.
So, this binder is laid out, this is laid out pretty similar to what we went through before. So, section A is the construction bids for Hayes, Kennedy, and Roosevelt. So, if you go to A1, you'll see there's a recommendation letter from me there, from Plant Rankrassa, just kind of outlining that bids went out just after Christmas, just after the holiday break on January 12th, and were due on February 4th. We actually had 182 bid proposals, which is fantastic coverage. McCarthy and Smith did a great job getting the local contractor community excited about the project and talked it up and we got a great turnout from 82 separate firms. And then over the next few weeks, we, I should say, Steve and his team spent a lot of time with the district's folks and with Stan, or sorry, French associates, doing post-bid interviews with mechanical contractors, electrical contractors, and quite a few other folks. So, we're bringing an award recommendation of $8,733,195. There's a couple of things I wanted to mention about that. One is that we had two bid categories where we did not have multiple bids and we thought it would make sense to wait and rebid those out. One was balancing. There's really only two balancing firms that we typically run into on projects like this. We got a bid from one, we wanted to give the other firm an opportunity to bid as well and make sure we had a competitive situation. So, that is actually being rebid out right now. We would hopefully bring that back in two weeks or actually be in three weeks on March 23rd. The other one was window treatments, I believe, right, Steve?
Visual.
Oh, sorry, visual display boards, that's right. So, same thing, there's two firms that typically bid those. We got a bid from one, but not the other. We wanted to make it competitive again, so we extended the bid date. Essentially, what we did is extend the bid date for those two bid divisions of work, so. So, if you flip to.
So, they'll come back separately?
Yeah, they'll both come back at the March 23rd meeting, I believe. So, if you flip to A2, this is just the same kind of summary we typically do that shows what the budgets were for the three buildings and then shows the variance. You'll see the CM fees and costs with the variance and then the construction contingency with the variance as well. So, you'll see that all told for the three projects were about $750,000 to the good. Now, there were a lot of alternates for these projects, similar to what we had for Emerson and Riley. We had door alternates, mechanical alternates in the media centers, some flooring alternates, things like that. We've been pretty consistent. We accepted some of them, the wireless clocks and some of the other ones. We did not accept the mechanical alternates in the media centers because we, again, want to wait and see how the Franklin bids come in. And we did not accept the door alternate to do some of the non-corridor doors because, again, we want to find out exactly where we sit with Franklin first.
Which is consistent with what we did with the 5, 6, and the 7, 8. Which is consistent with what we did with the 5, 6, and the 7, 8.
Yep.
So you remember that we talked about wanting to make sure to wait until the Franklin bids are in to figure out what we're going to do with all the alternates?
Does that account for why Roosevelt's so much, came in so much further under budget than the others?
That's part of it. Roosevelt is a pretty big building.
Right.
Probably the largest elementary that I've seen that you guys have. So the budget was larger accordingly. But if you look at it, the scope's really not that much different.
Okay.
We're actually getting started a little bit earlier, so I think the fact that the crews knew they could get in before summer and get some work done, I think helped the pricing on that one. I don't know, Steve, if you had any other insights as to that, probably?
It's really scope alignment versus budget.
Right. So that's a good, yeah, the other thing I wanted to mention is the entryways. You'll see there's a $78,300 number for that. That is to go back to the buildings we did last year and address the stamped concrete at the front entryways. Everyone thinks that the stamped concrete looks fantastic, but we've had some concerns operationally about ponding water, ice, things of that nature. I noticed coming in today that it looks pretty good, but depending on the weather situation, the temperatures, we just have some concerns, and the maintenance folks have some concerns about how that's going to be long-term. So what we're proposing is to actually go back in and take out portions of that stamped concrete to make the entryways a little bit safer for foot traffic, and replace it with colored concrete. So it'd be a similar design, but rather than the stamped variety, we'd have just colored concrete that would have a broom finish on it. That's what's in the scope going forward for all the buildings, to not do stamped concrete, to do colored concrete. We just think it's the prudent thing to do, to make sure nobody gets injured or there's no issues at all. So it's, you know, it's some dollars, but with the position that we're in, we've been fortunate to be under budget, we think it makes sense to do, so. So A3 is a recommendation letter from McCarthy and Smith. Excuse me. This details basically every vendor. You'll see a lot of familiar names that have bid on things last year and this year. There's one that I wanted to mention, which is bid division 142, which is Great Lakes Mechanical. You may recall that we recommended Great Lakes Mechanical for both Emerson and Riley, and we're coming tonight recommending them for all three of these projects as well, which means they'd have all five of the 2015 HVAC projects. That was extremely concerning when I saw that that was the case, that they were low on all of them. We actually requested a meeting with them, and they brought about 15 or 20 people that were going to be working on our project, not actually pipe fitters and sheet metal guys, but they brought separate project managers for each building, separate project engineers and accountants for each building. They are a pretty big mechanical outfit, and they've definitely got the wherewithal to handle all five of these. We made it very clear to them that we wanted to make sure that we had crews lined up, that they were earmarked for our job, that they weren't going to bid anything else that would jeopardize them getting done out here, and I think they've addressed all the concerns that we've had. So I do know that they're not going to be bidding Franklin, which would be even a bigger concern if they had tried to take on another project this summer. So hopefully, we have their attention, we have, you know, all the manpower lined up. They are a union firm, so they do have the ability to go to the hall if needed and get some more manpower. So I'm comfortable with it. Both Steve and then Stephanie and Scott over at Barton Mallow put them through the ringer, too, and they're both comfortable and confident that they can get the job done. So that's just something I wanted to bring up, though.
Paul, are they going to be using subcontractors, or is it going to be just they're all in-house employees?
Yeah, they actually self-perform both pipe fitting and sheet metal, so they're planning on doing it all in-house as of right now. We did ask them to make sure we had a solid Plan B. If they get too busy or they have issues, how are they going to staff the job? And they said they've already talked to the hall to make sure that they have enough bodies to pull if they need to, so. And they typically, we looked at how much work they typically do in a summer, and this is probably about 60% of a typical summer workload for them. So, you know, that made us feel a lot better, so.
Okay.
So you'll see that all those numbers tie out. There are a few bidders that were low, that asked to have their bids withdrawn, and there are some letters attached in section A3 that kind of detail those reasons. You know, a couple flooring guys, roofer, that had a mistake in their bid. So that's pretty typical, as long as it's not a mistake, it's not a big issue. A4 kind of lays out the base bid and alternate costs. So we did have some alternates, as I mentioned, that we did accept. The biggest one is really Hayes. We're going to be replacing the fascia, the exterior fascia, which is the band of, right now it's cast stone with some inset tiles that goes around the perimeter of the building.
Is that real multicolored tile, if you can picture it bright?
I'm pretty sure I was the only one that thought we might want to keep it. So everybody else agrees that it needs to be replaced. So that's going to be covered with new metal. And then you'll see the CM fees for pre-construction, staffing, general conditions, and then fee, which I'll tie out and add up. And then we put basically 10% contingency on the hard construction number, which is what we did last year to come to the totals, so. The page behind that just kind of gives the same information in a different way, kind of gives a little bit more detail for each building, so you can see the total number of bids, kind of the range from low to high, which kind of shows you, you know, kind of how we wound up there. And then the page behind that kind of details the alternates. And those were really the fascia, which I mentioned. We're doing wireless clocks rather than wired clocks this year, which should save us a lot of headaches, and then a couple other little things here and there, so. A5 is basically just the bid tab that shows all the different bidders that presented or proposed on the different bid divisions of work, and that is about it for A. Are there any questions on that before we go into the next section? So section B, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is President Burton.
Thank you. As I look at this document that was just presented to us, I see that a member of my family's company is a supplier to some of the mechanical contractors that are listed in this document. Therefore, I will be abstaining from all discussion and voting on this item for the Hayes, Kennedy, and Roosevelt construction. Because this company is a subcontractor and does not bid directly to LPS, I've been advised that I don't have to abstain. However, I'm choosing to do so in order to be completely transparent. To understand their perspective, the company was asked to vote, or to quote approximately $3,000 on cleaner and related products in over, on over a $2 million mechanical work project. So it is a very small portion. However, I am choosing to abstain. Thank you.
Anybody else at this point? Florence?
All right. So section B1, and again, this is a little out of order, because I forgot to mention this piece, but this is that last change order for this summer for environmental consulting work at Franklin for ETC Group. Again, their proposal is 20,000. We added some contingency to that and rounded it up to 25,000. This is a time and material type contract, so the hours they spend in the field are tracked and then billed against that dollar amount, so.
And where else is the ETC working this summer?
ETC is also doing Emerson and Riley for us this summer. They did Frost and Cooper last year. They've done a good job. The projects got done on time, which we were all very happy about. On the construction side, because you've got to get the abatement guys out of there before we can start putting things back together, so we're pretty confident that they're going to do a good job again this year. And then B2 is just summary of that, which is not very exciting. B3 is the letter from them, just kind of detailing their proposed costs. And then E4, or, sorry, B4 is, I've got three hole punched there, is their change order. Which takes us to C1, which are the abatement bids for Hayes, Kennedy, and Roosevelt. Those total about $603,000. Those were bid out again in January and due in February. We've had great luck with that, and we're going to keep that same cycle going next year as well, trying to put bids out either just before the holiday break and then due in January, or as soon as we get back from break. Excuse me. So we have those three projects. If you remember, we, last year, were significantly over budget on all the abatement projects, because the original budget only had roughly $100,000 at each building. A few weeks ago, Ms. Abbey and I sat down and kind of retuned the budget to more accurately reflect the scope of work in the abatement. So we actually shifted quite a bit of money from some of the contingency dollars we had, and we augmented the abatement budgets at each building. So you'll see this time, we're much more aligned with where we expected to be. That's because we used the numbers that the consultants gave us, where they expected the bids to be based on the scope. So you'll see we're about $50,000 under budget, Hayes, Kennedy, and Roosevelt, which is good. Kennedy was pretty similar to this building, with a lot of the spray-on insulation that had to be abated. And this building was about $200,000 more when we bid it out. So I was very happy to see that it stayed down, you know, considerably less, which also gives us more time to get the thing put back together again this summer, so. So you see, we have some abatement contingency, which is about 20% of those numbers that we're carrying for unforeseen things as we do demolition, and then that gives us a total variance of about $56,000 to the good. Section C3 just details each one of those firms. We've got Trust Thermal Abatement at Hayes, Qualified Abatement at Kennedy and Roosevelt, or, I'm sorry, Trust Thermal again at Roosevelt. Those are firms that have worked in the district before and we're very familiar with, so we're happy that they were the little bidders. Alternate one was some door removals that we're not doing, so we did not accept that amount.
Paul?
Yep.
I'm sorry. Did we use this Trust Thermal Abatement last year, or just the Qualified Abatement?
I don't think Trust Thermal was low on any of the projects last year, but I believe they have worked in the district before. I've worked with them in a couple other school districts within the last few years, and they've done pretty good work for me, so.
I know that our engineer, when he reviewed that, was very familiar with Trust Thermal and was pleased with their work in the past.
Yep, yeah, they're-
Which engineer is that? Jim McMuldrick. Oh. He handled, he has handled all of our asbestos for many, many years, all of our asbestos issues or environmental issues.
Yep, and when I worked with Trust Thermal, the last time, it was actually with Nova overseeing them, so Nova's pretty comfortable with them as well.
Okay.
C4 is just the bid tabulation. You'll see we have three firms that bid, which actually, we were expecting a lot more. We had, I think, nine or 10 firms that came to the pre-bid walkthrough and toured the buildings, but only three of them chose to bid. I think it's, as Greg's mentioned a few times, and Dr. Leep has mentioned, the economy's definitely ticking up, and people are getting busier, there's more things to bid out there, so getting people's attention is a little bit harder. Hopefully, it holds out for at least another week for Franklin, so.
We were early, right, though?
We were.
We were early with that, getting that one out.
Yep. So that kind of takes us to the end of C for the three elementary's abatement. There's no questions?
Any questions?
Nope. We'll roll into D, which is for Emerson and Riley. So this is back to ETC again, who's overseeing this. Those bids, again, went out in January and were due on February 5th. We had 10 proposals from five different firms for those two projects, and they total about $267,000. So if you look at D2, you'll see the budgets. Again, we adjusted to more accurately reflect the scope of work. So we're pretty close to target there, and then we've got 20% contingency built in as well. So we're about $62,000 to the good. Those are pretty straightforward. And if you look at D3, you'll see a recommendation letter from Environmental Testing and Consulting. Says they interviewed several firms, and they are recommending, if I can read their letter right. Looks like Global Green was disqualified, and Doran Associates withdrew their bid. They're actually-
I think they had two different ones. Emerson and Sloan.
Two different firms, yeah.
Right. Emerson was Sloan.
Sloan was on one of them.
Martin and Associates for Riley.
Thank you. So those numbers should all tie out back to the summary sheet. Those are two firms that I'm not as familiar with, but I did talk to the two individuals that have been running things for us from ETC, and they were familiar with them and had worked with them in the past, and we're confident that they can get the job done. Again, these projects are smaller. When you get into the spray-on abatement, like we had here, like we have over at Kennedy, that gets a lot more concerning about manpower and hitting those dates, but these are pretty small abatement jobs in the big picture of things, so. And there's only, they only each have one, rather than having two or three or multiple jobs, so. And that takes us to E, unless there's any questions.
Paul, just one question. Do we know why Global Green was disqualified?
Um, I think there was a letter.
Yes, there is.
I don't think there was.
Doran Associates, I saw.
Yeah, I saw the door. I didn't see one in green.
No, I don't know the answer to that, actually. I don't have that answer, but I could certainly-
We can make sure to get that in your panel on Thursday.
Yep.
Who was that again, Mark?
Uh, Global Green.
Yep. Actually, Jim sat in on those interviews, and he's no longer around for me to pick his brain, so.
We'll get that info to you.
So the last section is E1, which is the abatement bids for Franklin. Those bids came in with contingency at about $194,000. You'll see, again, we realigned the budget, so we're pretty close to that number, at 161 plus 20% contingency. And again, all those variances that you see in the far right-hand column will be shifted over back into the owner contingency fund. So that's good, we're still making positive headway on all these projects to cushion us against the unforeseens, you know, later this year and next year. So that's exactly where we want to be. You'll see a recommendation letter from Environmental Testing and Consulting again in section E3. And they're recommending Total Environmental of Toledo, Ohio. This is actually Franklin, which I think we talked a little bit about, is actually a phased project.
Right.
So we're renovating roughly half the building this summer, starting the new auditorium, and then next year, we'd be doing the balance of the building. So this bid is kind of split into two phases. So you'll see the $82,410 for the first phase, and then $79,165 for the second phase. So it made sense to retain the same contractor, so we had consistency and some of the permitting, and in case something comes up, you know, during the year that we have to address, we already have them under contract, so. And you'll see some copies of the bid. The one thing that I didn't have, again, because I was a little disconnected from Jim now that he's gone, is I do not have a copy of the bid tab for Franklin bids. So I'm going to have to get a copy of that for your packet as well. So I'll add that note to make sure I have a copy of that included as well.
All right. Any questions for Paul? Ms. McDonald?
Same question I have every time. Why can't we have these for associate packets? I mean, it's, to me, it's just, it's a lot of money that we're responsible for reviewing and voting on. And I know we have two weeks till the next meeting, but we can't publicly ask questions freely without having the opportunity to go through and review this information before.
So as far as the timing goes, we're really trying to get everything awarded this month before April 1st.
I understand that, but, you know, if you can't get us a physical book, email it to us.
To be honest, I just put this, finished putting it together and proofing it today and Friday. Some of the bids, the moving bids, for instance, didn't come in until, I think, last Wednesday. So we really are trying to take every available second to get everything bid out and put together, and-
I know, it's a lot of work, Paul. I understand that.
I know, I-
But it's a lot of money.
It is, it is. Which is why we wanted to give it to you guys for two weeks, so that you have enough time to go through it. If any questions come up other than the ones we talked about today, we're more than happy to address them. You know, copies of all the bids are at Lisa's office, so if anybody wants to look through anything or any of the proposal documents, you know, they're all available to review, so.
I'll bring my questions to the next meeting.
Paul, I'm looking at the bids for Riley.
Mm-hmm.
And I know we tried to go with the lowest bidder, but these are so significantly lower than the other bids, it's enough to give me pause.
Which ones are we looking at specifically?
The abatement, what section?
This is section D.
Oh.
For example, this is section D3, I'm looking at. They're so significantly lower, it makes me wonder if they had a math error or didn't address the scope of the project.
Yeah, you know, abatement, abatement's kind of a tricky one. There's a lot of different ways to bid those projects, depending on how they're phased, how their labor is, how they're staffed. Last year, we had a couple clauses where we were actually, had a penalty clause if people were late in certain phases, and we actually had a bonus clause if they finished early. We kind of did away with that, because it just didn't really work the way that I was hoping it to. We ended up arguing about whether we were done early or not done early and all this, so, which is the last thing we needed, so. But I think, you know, a lot of the time, the abatement numbers vary- But I think, you know, a lot of the time, the abatement numbers vary more than the normal construction numbers, because if these guys are busy, things get 50% markup, 60% markup, 70%. Because the summer construction season is a very small window, and it's when everyone wants to do all their abatement work, when the kids are out of college, when the kids are out of school. So typically, when I see numbers like this, I assume that Sloan doesn't have a lot of work on their docket right now, and these other firms do. And some of these firms, you know, had bid other projects, you know, whether they're for us or some of the other local school districts, I know they've been bidding out work as well, so. There is a pretty big discrepancy there.
Huge.
But I think, you know, ETC, and ETC and NOVA are pretty tough on these guys. If they thought for a second that they couldn't perform, they would have disqualified them. Which you can see they did to a couple of firms.
Even Martin, same thing, it's just astonishing, the discrepancy.
These guys really don't have any suppliers to speak of, too. You know, if I see a mechanical number with a swing like that, you know, they're buying univentilators from the same vendor, because we pre-priced them and pre-packaged them. Same thing with the controls. They have a lot of the same suppliers, but abatement's really almost all labor, so depending on how they have, what their plan is to get things done, it can vary pretty wildly, I guess.
Well, I rely on your expertise, but I sure don't like nasty surprises.
No, me either. I assure you, I do not like surprises at all. But I will, I'll push back a little bit on our consultants and make sure that they really did vet them out to the nth degree, so.
Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Still trying to call you positive.
Old habits die.
Oh, I know, they're hard to break, aren't they? What stopgaps do we have in place in order to protect for change orders?
Um, for, actually, last year, last year at four of the five buildings, we got along pretty well. There was one, one building where we ended up fighting about quite a few change orders, and the reason, I think, was because we didn't have a lot of unit prices for different, you know, whether it's flooring tile or mastic or whatever it might be. This year, the orders that I issued out were, I want unit prices for everything that we could possibly come across, pipe fittings, pipe wrap, glue, caulk. So we actually literally have a unit price for almost everything you could think of that would ever come back positive, so I think that'll help us out a lot. I went through those, those numbers are very aggressive, very fair, I think. So really, you know, abatement is what it is. If you come across something and it tests positive, you've got to, you've got to abate it if it's in the way. But I think because we pre-priced everything out, that we won't have to worry about, you know, whether it's a fair shake or not, so.
So there may be change orders, but we have an idea of what, that pricing and what it would be based on this firm, so.
For instance, last year, I think we paid about $2.50 a square foot to abate tile and mastic. The unit price I saw in here was $1.50, so I was very happy to see that, so I think the message was sent loud and clear. At least I hope it was.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing that, thank you, Paul. Appreciate it.
Just as a reminder, then, so in two weeks, these will be on the voting meeting agenda to move forward. We've got the 5, 6, and the 7A school bids done, got that piece done. And so what will happen after the 16th is on the 23rd, which I think is a night for your board workshop.
Workshop, right.
We'll, we'll begin that meeting looking at the Franklin bid, because remember, we were going to bring those, we were going to schedule an additional meeting to bring those bids to the board to review, so we can get these projects going as quickly as possible for the summer, so. So just a reminder, I mean, I know we've given this to you on multiple occasions, we've talked about it on multiple occasions, and we've given you a summary of what bids are still outstanding. I just wanted to highlight again that the next two steps are on the 16th, we'll have the votes for the elementary work and the abatement work, and then on the 23rd, we'll start discussion on the Big Kahuna, the Franklin project. And are there any other bids that are coming on 23rd also, or just the...
Well, that move management.
In the move management that we've heard, yes.
Projectors.
Oh, yeah, you're right, there are a couple of technology projects that are coming in as well.
Okay, so we'll have a couple of technology bids also, thank you.
The projectors, like we saw in the patterns today.
Got you, thank you.
And so that would be at that, before the board workshop, and then it would also be before or after the committee meeting scheduled for the 30th, that would be a voting.
Yep.
Hopefully, we'll be able to schedule a voting meeting on that day as well, so that we can actually move forward on those.
Yep. That's been the game plan since, since the fall, so just a reminder.
Very busy March.
Yes, of course.
Thanks again, Paul, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Paul.
And President Burton concludes Building Insight.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is Item 4 Finance and Nature.
Thank you, President Burton. We have a report on best practice school aid incentive, which will be presented by Mrs. Abby.
Thank you very much. We did have a chance to talk about this a little bit at the board study session last week. As you know, the, in the school aid fund, there is an incentive, they call it the best practice incentive, that will be provided to school districts at $50 per student if they meet seven out of nine requirements. We have, this is, I think, our third year in a row that we have met this, although the amount has changed and gone down each of those years, but still, $50 a student does represent over $700,000 to us, and frankly, these are things that we do anyway, so we are happy to report that we have met the seven out of nine requirements. I did put in your packet this week the sample resolution that we will ask you to approve at our next voting meeting. We have filled it out as the state requested, which is, we list all of the nine items, and then we put a strike through for any that we don't meet. And you can see that on your list of the two that we have made that strike through that we don't meet. So we meet seven out of the nine, which is what we needed to do. One thing we did write down is what competitive bid, which was, this year was for Waste Management. We actually could have extended many that we've done in the last several years, all of those professional services that we bid out for the bond would also meet that, but we did have a separate Waste Management, so we listed that. And again, we have vetted through the other items, and we're very confident we meet those requirements. The other thing that I did provide you last week was a sample or a draft 1516 budget. As you know, the Board of Education has not had significant deliberation or made a recommendation on a budget, but as part of the best practices, we're required to put out a draft budget in a normal format that we would adopt a budget. I went over that detail with you last week and went through the assumptions that we made to make that draft budget, including what potentially could be our ending funding balance this year for 1415, and then we went through the assumptions about our enrollment, our expectations foundation allowance, and some of the one-time revenues, and brought that budget to you last week in that summary format. And included in your packet this week was that budget in what we're required to adopt it or in function format, so you see it in the way that we always adopt a budget there. This will go out, this is out on the website, and it, just like you see it in your packet, it says "draft" across it. So hopefully, you know, that's understood, that this is not a budget that the board has recommended or deliberated or voted on, this is simply a budget based on our best estimate right now of what our budget could look like for next year. As you know, we'll be just, hopefully, there will be things changing, there will be many, many things changing, and we'll be bringing that to the board as we have that information to discuss further next year's budget. So with that, be happy to answer any questions on best practices, or the budget, or anything on the resolution?
Thank you. Ms. Abbey, in the nine different criteria, one of the criteria that is the district implements a comprehensive guidance and counseling program, what is this state considered comprehensive?
It's actually one that was recommended at the state level, which basically, very few of any school districts meet.
Okay.
And so it would require us to add a significant amount of staff in order to meet the comprehensive requirements that they've outlined. So as you can imagine, every entity that represents any different function of a school district has its ideal in regards to what types of services it would provide, whether it be class size at the elementary level, or whether it's what an extracurricular program should include at high school, or what a physical education program provides in its course offerings. So for whatever reason, and we couldn't quite figure this out last year, but for whatever reason, the guidance counseling lobby, so to say, in Michigan was able to get this as a potential best practice requirement. And of course, we'd love to be able to do it, as would other school districts, but it's extremely expensive, and so there are very few school districts that actually are able to say that they meet that guideline. And that's a little background to how it got there.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, question. Dr. Leep, what would be, I guess, the benefit? I'm assuming that the benefit that we would receive if we met that would be far exceeded by the cost to...
It's like any other budget decision. We don't get any more money if we meet that one. Since we meet seven out of the nine, we get the $50. So it's not like if we met eight out of nine, we would get $60.
Get something more.
Yeah, so there's no additional funding attached to that, and so for us, it would just be additional expense. And, you know, as we do every year, we go through and we would recommend to you if we felt that that was more important than something else in the budget as a staff, and at this point in time, we and many school districts across the state have come to the conclusion that we just can't do that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions? Thank you. Now, Mrs. Abby can present to us the budget...
So this resolution will come onto the regular agenda next two weeks from tonight?
Right. We're going to go to agenda.
Sound good?
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mrs. Abby, will you present to us budget revisions for this current year, 2014-15?
Thank you very much, again. I am passing out. Did I not get enough over to you?
We'll get one more.
You certainly may.
We have a staffer, Mrs. Laura Giedon.
Are we going to ship it to her on the...
I think you should. She'll be so sorry she's missing the budget presentation.
I love both.
Well, as we do every year, we bring to the Board of Education several budget amendments throughout the year to update you with the most up-to-date information we have, our projections and our expectations for the year. As you know, typically, we end up with three revisions. This year, we're actually on our third revision right now. Typically, we do bring you a budget amendment in March, but we will, just so you know, have one more in June, as we always do, so this will not be our last budget amendment for the year. As we do every year, we, at this time of the year, we sit down and we look at every line item in our general fund budget and review it for expectations of both accuracy and estimates for projections for the balance of the year. What I have in front of you right now is just a very simple synopsis of where we started, where we adopted the budget, that was Column B, and where we are right now, which is Column E, and I'll just briefly go through those changes for you. What you're looking at in Column F, that increase or decrease is the change from the second budget amendment to the third budget amendment. So in other words, from Column D to Column E. So when we look at that, we're looking at a revenue increase of $1.3 million. Very simply, the majority of this, a little over $1 million, goes back to the Section 147(c), 147(d), state revenue that we're getting, which is that pension stabilization that we're getting from the state. We've talked about this at the other couple of budget amendments, this is now our most accurate estimate, based on what we know today for the balance of the year. I don't expect that to change again significantly, at least in the final amendment. I think we have most of the information we need. This has been kind of a changing target. You might recall that the state, the Section 147(d) was going to be implemented this year, which was, if I remember correctly, I think it was $50 million overall statewide, it was to reduce down the pension for future, but when they decided they needed that money to meet their budget problems this year, they stopped making those payments mid-year, so that part went down, but other parts went up. So again, big, big piece of that, a little over $1 million, is the rate stabilization for 147(c) and (d). That's also offset by the same amount of an increase in expenditures. We had some other expenditures that decreased, so that's why the expenditures only went up $680,000. But overall, we had an increase in revenues and an equal increase in expenditures for the retirement rate for stabilization. So I'm just going to stop right there, because that was a lot of talk about retirement rate. Is there any questions on that part, or? Okay, so I'll go through then again what the difference was, why that isn't exactly up the same amount of money. Overall, the good news is, we are increasing our fund balance, anticipated fund balance, a little over $600,000, bringing the overall fund balance anticipated the end of this year at just a little over $1 million. So I'm glad to see that improvement. Yeah, it helps, it helps.
That huge step, so a small step.
The small steps, and we'll take it.
Starts with the first step.
I have other copies if you need them.
Okay.
Okay. Just a second.
Thank you.
Sorry. So just big picture, local revenues down just a little bit, the state revenues, I just went through, most of that 1.4 million, what you're seeing, I'm now down in the bottom section of this, kind of detailing what those changes are, and presenting this a little bit more detail this time. You'll let me know if you think this is a good format going forward on the bottom of this section. Again, the state revenues went up 1.4 million, again, about 1.1 million of that is the retirement rate. The balance of that actually is some prior year revenues that were adjusted in the state aid. This is based on both property taxes and special aid costs from prior years. That's one-time money, but that was almost $400,000, so that's good news. On the expenditure side, you can see detail of what changed between salaries, benefits. Purchase services were the three main items. Salaries went down a couple of reasons. About a portion of this, maybe about half of it, is due to some of the positions that we haven't filled this year. As you know, Dr. Leep, I talked about early on when we, when we had the budget amendment in November, about not having met some of our targets this year in terms of our budget projections, and one of our strategies to compensate for that was to look at each position in the district that became open, for whatever reason, and decide whether we would fill or not fill that position for the balance of the year. So some of that salary reduction reflects some of those changes. So one time, at least some of those may be one time, in other words, we may need to add those positions back for next year, but it does help us get through this year and help with that fund balance number. Part of it is just our normal budget adjustments that we have every time this time of year. It might be switches in a grant covering for something, it might be changes in people on leave of absence, it could be a variety of things, but part of that is due to our not filling positions this year. The benefit line item is a reflection of, one, the increase in the retirement rate, and also a slight change in our overall insurance cost, down a little bit. Of course, we're also going to save in FICA in retirement if we have less salaries, we have less costs in FICA and retirement payroll costs. The purchase services, unfortunately, I know no one's using Polar Vortex this year, but I'll go ahead and start Polar Vortex, too, because as cold as it's been, we are expecting to see our energy use up a little bit this year, so I have added additional costs, almost $400,000, in our utility budget to cover both heat and electricity this year. So hopefully, we won't need all that, and when I come back to you in June, you'll see me adjust that line item the other way. I hope that's the way it works out, but as we sit right now, I do want to make sure that we have sufficient resources for the balance of the year. And then the other line items are just small adjustments as we normally make, purchase services, supplies, and other items. I've also provided to you, as I always do, the major changes that you can look at on your own time and feel free to give me a call if you have any questions, just as another way of looking at the same line items that I just told you. This is broken out by function area, or how we adopt the budget, so that you can see, I provided it to you on the first page by major items, salaries, benefits, purchase services, and then this way, details by, almost by line item, area, instruction, people's service, et cetera, any budget changes. So it just looks at it a different way, same, same information, so feel free. The other thing that we'll do this week is, because we do have two weeks in between, we will get out the full budget book to you in your packet, you'll have it for your weekend reading, yay! But then we'll still have an opportunity for you to get with me or anyone in my office if you have any questions, further questions on the budget. So with that, are there any questions?
Is anyone have questions for Mrs. Abby?
Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you, Mrs. Darvin. Ms. Abby, under Column C, that $1.7 million in the sale of the property, is that adjusted into that $2.2 million? No?
No. So what you're looking at, that's from our discussion last time on the 1516 transparency budget, that's the sheet that you're looking at, yeah. Those assumptions in that budget was simply to put that transparency budget together for the website. So what I said on that 1.7 million, if you look, it says "estimate for final budget amendment." So that was our, and this isn't, this is only the third budget amendment, it's not the final.
Right.
So we're hoping if we do make... So, we're hoping if we do make some of those inroads into some of those sale of property and/or cell tower that we talked about, that we would have that resource in this year's budget.
Okay. So, but being in this column here, it has nothing to do with this?
Yes, it does have to do with that ending fund balance, correct.
You're looking at the wrong sheet in regards to what you'll be approving in two weeks.
Yeah, what you're going to be approving in the week is the one that says general fund amendment number three. And it has kind of a green tint to it at the top.
Is it?
You've got a different sheet.
I think I have. I have all kinds of different sheets here. That's why I'm thinking.
There you go.
All right. That makes more sense.
Yeah, so that one was for the, that we talked about at the study session, for the transparency budget, the other one that you were looking at.
Okay.
Which, I mean, is really a fake budget. I mean, it's not a fake budget, but it's an estimated draft budget that we, you know, we're required to put together for next year. I only say it that way because the assumptions are very reasonable assumptions, but until we have an idea of what our foundation allowance will be, we don't, you know, we don't, there's a lot of information we still don't have as we move forward for 1516, so it is.
And there are a variety of cost-saving revenue enhancement items that we've talked to you about that we're in the process of, but we're not going to budget until we know we have.
Right, no, no, I understand that. I was just confused, because I was looking at something that wasn't applicable to this discussion.
Yes.
I got a little confused there, so.
Not at all.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the budget?
We are going to, you would like us to vote on the amendment, correct?
Correct. On the 1415 amendment number three.
Okay.
And that will be, when we bring that, that will be all of the funds, and you'll have that in your packet this week. And there really aren't any significant changes in the other funds. They really came pretty much where we had them before, as you've seen them before.
And are there any other questions for Mrs. Abbey? Do you have that to be addressed?
We'll be on the head of it on March 16th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that concludes the report for the finance.
Thank you. We are on to item five, policy committee, and we will move on to the budget.
Thank you. We have Mrs. Demand is going to help us out.
Good evening, everyone. Today, I am bringing to you some revisions to board policy JCEC, and that board policy has to do with bullying prevention. That was brought to the board in 2012, and the date on the old one is May the 7th. In the last few months, this particular policy, or this particular law has been amended, and the amendment requires the district to include in the policy information about cyberbullying, even though the original bullying policy did talk about electronic. When they reviewed it, when they reviewed the law, they decided that they really needed to put in the word cyberbullying. So, you will see on your copy that there is, that the changes are in red, and in the third paragraph where it describes bullying, we are including the words including but not limited to cyberbullying. And then when you get to paragraph four, the cyberbullying is defined.
Where did you get that definition from?
From the law. We took it right from the law. And you'll see there that, again, they have the actions as they do under bullying. The next area that was changed was down at the very bottom of yours, where it says the superintendent or his designee, and you can see in red it says, "This policy will be publicized by being placed on the district's website and in student handbooks." That is now required. We must tell in the policy where it can be located. So, that has been added, and on your third page, you will see down at the very bottom where it says confidentiality, that was now required to put in there to the extent permitted by law. The documents comprising the investigation will be maintained in a secure manner and will not be commingled with other documents, and will be disclosed only in accordance with the law or on a need-to-know basis, that that is required. And then all the way down, the legal reference, the law has now been changed from Matt's Safe School Law to Matt Epling Safe School Law. So, that has to be changed in the policy. And it should be on the bottom of yours. If it's not, it will be on the final one. And that is amending the Michigan School Code MCL 380.1310B.
And that'll be a first reading?
First reading, that's correct.
So, just a handful of changes, really, as Mrs. Demand highlighted, to meet the new requirements of the law that was passed in December.
Does anybody have?
I mean, really, the intent of this is a fine large part of our policy, but we have to spell it out by law.
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay, then we'll move on to EBA and Dr. Leepa.
Yes, as you know, we've had several conversations about the disposition of real property as it relates to our budget. And as you know, in our budget forums with the community, we received a lot of feedback in regards to different revenue enhancement ideas to help us balance our budget and save and maintain programs, with the disposition of real property being one example of something that the community would support in regards to saving programs for our school district. And so, one of the challenges with that particular suggestion is that we have a board policy that identifies that any sale of property will be set aside for one-time expenditure purposes in our building and site fund. And so, as we discussed that, the best way that, based on the feedback that I received, the best way that we thought we could tackle this was to amend the existing policy to recognize both what our community has talked to us about, and also recognize what we as a board and administration have talked about, and that is saving the LaBona brand and as much as possible programs, if at all possible. And so, in strategizing about that, what we did is drafted a slight change to the board policy that would recognize these feelings. And so, what you see at the end of the policy is wording that would basically say what it says right now, and that is, "The special proceeds derived from the sale of real estate will be held in trust in a special capital project fund identified separately and from any other capital project funds, which shall be used for purchasing other real estate for the district and/or renovating, replacing, or developing real estate facilities or long-term assets as authorized by the Board of Education." And then we add, "Unless the fund balance of the district's general fund is below 5% of total expenditures, at which time the Board of Education may determine to utilize proceeds in the general fund to protect programs." And so, that addition basically addresses that overall issue of, if we're struggling in the general fund and we want to utilize those dollars to protect programs, we have the flexibility to do that. At the same point in time, if we have available fund balance and we're in good shape financially, we still want to stick to the initial intent of this policy, which it will be used for one-time capital projects activities. And also highlights, remember, just as a, as a, as another point, that even if you are below 5%, it says may, so you still can use it for those one-time expenditures if you wish to do so at the time. This just provides you the flexibility to utilize it to protect programs. And so, that's the recommendation.
Mr. Johnson?
Question. Shouldn't, the intent here is to use the funds that go into the special capital project fund to protect programs, right?
Correct.
I mean, if we look at the, at the, the new section, unless the fund balance of the district's general fund is below 5% of the general, of the total expenditures, at which time the Board of Education may determine to utilize proceeds in the, shouldn't there be the special capital project fund, not the general fund? Because that's the, this is the fund that we're talking about.
I think I understand the way that you're reading that, but really, what we're talking about is that we're not talking about, you're thinking that we're talking about utilizing proceeds in the special fund to help the general fund. The intent of what we wanted to say here is that these dollars from the sale of property can be used in the general fund. So, it says, "The Board of Education may determine to utilize proceeds," okay, because remember, this is talking about proceeds going into the capital projects fund?
Right.
What this is saying is that the Board of Education may determine to utilize proceeds in the general fund to protect programs. So, maybe we could say utilize these proceeds?
Yes.
These specific proceeds?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you have a suggestion, Ms. McDonald?
I was just thinking four. For the general fund to protect programs.
So, how about if we say, "These specific proceeds for the general fund?"
Use in the general fund to protect.
For use in the general fund, although that's not to everybody.
Yeah, that makes it clear to me.
So, let me read it out loud then. "Unless the fund balance of the district's general fund is below 5% of the total expenditures, at which time, the Board of Education may determine to utilize these specific proceeds for use in the general fund to protect programs."
Yes, sounds good.
You guys like that better?
Yep.
Excellent suggestions. Thank you. Any other comments before we bring this for our first reading? Concerns, thoughts?
I'm good.
Okay, that'll be a first reading, and that's, we'll conclude policy.
All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda for the evening. We will not be meeting next week. We have a break in our schedule, and we will be meeting again on March 16th. Again, thank you very much to the Coolidge community for welcoming us into their building today. If you are a member of the community, take advantage of seeing some of the buildings where these renovations have taken place. These are your tax dollars at work. And we are, again, grateful to the community for extending the generosity that they have to make our community and our schools so much stronger. With that, we wish you a nice evening. Thank you. Good night.